I'd like to call the public hearing to order and welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission July 29, 2020, public hearing at 6:00 PM. This public hearing was advertised in the Murfreesboro Post on June 9, 2020. Our item of business is Plan Commission Resolution 2020-01, a resolution to amend Article 4, Section 4.108.5 of the Laverne subdivision regulation regarding the sidewalk fee and lieu option. I'd like to open the floor for any comments. If anybody would like to speak on this item, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Anyone? With no one wanting to speak on this item, I'll call this meeting adjourned. I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission July 28, 2020, meeting at 6:00 PM. We do have a quorum. Our first item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the July 30, 2020 regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the minutes that are available and were emailed to us and move that we approve.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Our second.
Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. First item of business, site plan power equipment company requested by Michael Dewey. Property located at Waldron Road and International Boulevard, tax map 17, parcel 5.01, C2 Highway Service Commercial and I2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Property owned by Bramco Inc. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This property is located on Waldron Road. This is the power equipment facility. And the request tonight is to modify the site to add a rental-ready area and some associated parking. The rental-ready area would go on the south side of the building. And you can see, this parcel has two zoning designations. It is zoned I2 and C2. And the C2 is fronting Waldron Road. This red area is C2. So on their plan, over the last couple of tries, they have moved the rental-ready area back away from Waldron Road so it doesn't interfere with the C2 area. Here's some photos of the site. They do have brick on a large portion of the front of the building and then it should go back to the service area. They used some metal siding and different materials for that. The clouded areas on the site plan are what they're proposing to change. And the applicant did not submit the PDF in time to make this presentation. They were late getting their, several of their materials in. So this, this is changed only slightly from the workshop, but they are, if you look at sheet C3.0 in the site plan, they're proposing two concrete pads that, they're calling them stoops, I think, but on the plan it says concrete pads. You'll see those on C3.0. They were not there two weeks ago, so I need to point that out. Also, they're going to be adding quite a bit of fencing and gates. And I think Mr. Leach had some comments about those, so we'll get to those in just a moment. They're not building, with this proposal, they're not building any new structures and no new buildings, other than the concrete pads and the fencing and gates and then the rental-ready area. And so one of staff's comments throughout has been that whatever surface they use, it has to be 100% dustless. So they'll probably want to talk about that tonight. And see, the building you see today was approved in September of 2017, so it's been approved close to three years ago when it got approval. I'll let Mr. Leach speak to his items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Mr. Leach, please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, my one remaining comment, well, there's some other concerns, of course, but is that the dustless surface detail shown in the back and referenced still shows it as a, basically a clean gravel product that does not meet the definition of our dustless surface, well, we won't call it ordinance, but our section of the zoning ordinance that controls that. So that, that issue has not yet been addressed. Other concerns, which are just concerns, we'll discuss those at workshop, so I won't reread them. They're, they're still valid, however.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Is there a representative here for this project this evening? Mr. Logan, have we received anything requesting a deferral on this item?
No, sir. You might remember, they missed the workshop as well, so.
Yes, sir.
Seems to be a pattern.
Yes, sir. Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mayor Cole.
Mr. Logan, you mentioned as far as the timeframe for this submittal. Have you and Mr. Leach had the opportunity to fully review this?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
I believe both Bo and I received this about noon today. Typically, the deadline was Monday or later than the close of business, so it was exceedingly late. Their changes were minor, so I did have a chance to look at them to see whether or not comments have been addressed. Obviously, as I have a comment remaining, it was not. Mr. Logan had essentially the same amount of time I did, so that was the only remaining comment I had, and it was not addressed, so there it is.
Very good. Sorry to notice you just walked in. Are you with this project?
Yes.
Would you please come to this podium and state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, I'm Michael Dewey with Dewey Engineering, 2925 Berry Hill Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. Sorry, I'm running a bit behind.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, I understand. There's still a couple of items left on the technical items that need to be addressed on this item. Would you like to defer this item or proceed forward and have us go ahead and vote on it?
The dustless surface is one of the items, and I was hoping that we could discuss that briefly, as the owner is, understands that that's not something that's, is permitted anymore, but it, but it was installed recently. And so one of the things that he's talked about is wanted to get staffs and planning commission's thoughts on converting a portion of dustless surface that was recently installed per the previously approved plans and making that concrete and installing the dustless surface, because, as shown here. And the portion that it would be, would be up along Waldron Road, and so we would take that dustless surface or gravel area and convert that to concrete and show, and then install the, what we are currently showing as dustless surface, as a dustless surface, so that you don't cross back and forth over from, you know, because right now, the way that it is, you're going to have to cross over a dustless surface and it's going to create, you know, if there is a concern with dust, it'll, you're still going to be crossing that even if it is all concrete.
Yes, sir. That seems a little involved for a meeting-type item, so I would probably suggest a deferral so that we can come back at workshop and discuss that, since you also missed the workshop. There's, I think there's a couple of other items that we wanted to discuss, so that's something you'd be willing to do, sir?
Oh, yes, yeah, no problem. I would like to, just to, if I could, if staff, is that something that we need to get staff support, or can we get some feedback from?
Need to speak with staff, and then at workshop, we'll all discuss it.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll get a good, solid answer. That way, you're ready for a meeting.
Okay.
Perfect. So request for deferral from the applicant?
That'll be fine.
Thank you. We will be deferring this item and discussing it at workshop. Once again, next item. Final plat, public right-of-way dedication for a portion of Lilian Buchanan Drive and Veterans Memorial Parkway requested by Womble and Associates. Property located on Lilian Buchanan Drive, Veterans Memorial Parkway and Murfreesboro Road. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This request is for the final plat for the right-of-way dedication for a portion of Lilian Buchanan Drive and Veterans Memorial Parkway. I can see there in the imagery, this backs up to the townhomes, the villas of Central Park. So here's Murfreesboro Road, and then the post office is just off the screen here. So the corner of Lilian Buchanan and Murfreesboro Road is the post office. And then this is Veterans Memorial that leads back to the villas of Central Park. There's a zoomed-out view, you can see the park there just beyond to the north, Veterans Memorial Park and the ballfields. This property is zoned C2 on either side, coming off Murfreesboro Road, and then, of course, it goes to R3 zoning for the villas. And there's the plat, and they are dedicating .74 acres, so about three-quarters of an acre from Veterans Memorial and a half an acre from Lilian Buchanan Drive. And there's no staff, no staff comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments from the board regarding this item?
Mr. Chair.
We'll entertain a motion. Mayor Cole?
Our motion that we accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next item. Item number three, set bond amount for a portion of Lilian Buchanan Drive and Veterans Memorial Parkway, tax map 14, parcel 72.02, requested by Danny Womble, C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So this request is to set the bond amount for the same area, which is a portion of Lilian Buchanan Drive and a portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway. And Mr. Womble, on behalf of his client, is requesting that the planning commission set the bond amount for these portions of roadway. And per the subdivision regulations, the developer has submitted three construction bids, an average plus the required 20% contingency, and stamped estimate provided by an engineer also. And the bids are from Four Star, Blue Water, and Gibbs Brothers, and engineer's estimate comes to exactly $100,000 total. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Any questions or comments from the board?
Motion to accept the bid as submitted for $100,000.
We have a motion to accept the bid. Do we have a second? Second, Mayor Cole? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Items number four and five have been deferred. We'll be moving on to new business. Item number six, site plan Granite Empire requested by Huddleston Steel. Property located at 5605 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 18, Group A, parcel 1.02, C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by RNG Property Investors LLC. Logan.
Thank you. This project is Granite Empire, and they were, they've been here a few times in the past, and at the workshop, they had several items to address. And since that time, today, I've received an email from one of their consultants that asked for a deferral, and so that's a late development, so there's no plans in the packet since they asked for that deferral. However, there is a representative here that I think would like to talk with you all, so.
Absolutely. If you'd like to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Rhonda Smith of Granite Empire.
Address, please, ma'am.
Address at Granite Empire's 5605 Murfreesboro Road, Laverne.
Thank you, ma'am. I understand that you have requested a deferral to address some of the technical items?
It was, to my knowledge, that all of these items had been addressed. We spoke to Rusty Rust, who said that, relayed some information that the property regarding the fee and lieu of the sidewalk and the rock that would need to be placed out front had already been paid for, and he wanted to address the committee. And I believe Mr. Logan got an email today at 11:15 asking to withdraw this submittal. I have not been notified of anything of this, who was making the plans with Huddleston, who will get corrected tomorrow morning.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Logan, that was a request for deferral, not request for removal, correct?
Well, I think the actual emails said either, and I emailed Mr. McGuire back, and he's, that's who emailed me, and I said, "Do you want a withdrawal or a deferral?", but he, he's not emailed me back, so.
Well, obviously, the applicant wants the, wants us to proceed, so we'll go with the deferral.
Thank you.
That will allow you to come back to workshop. We'll discuss it there, and then we'll, we'll make a final decision next month, okay?
Very appreciated.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am. We'll be moving on to our next item. Item number seven, preliminary plat, the retreat at Finch Branch, Section 2, requested by SEC, Inc., property located off Greenwood Drive and Irvin Road, tax map 29, parcel 29, R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Robert and Joan Waldron. Mr. Logan.
This request is for a preliminary plat approval for the retreat at Finch Branch, Section 2. And this area is located off Irvin Road and Greenwood Drive. And they are requesting preliminary plat approval for about 113 lots in this phase, and the total acreage of the site is 48.91 acres. And this, this too's been here a couple of times. Early on, there was a discussion about having a roundabout on part of this, part of this development, but since then, that's been changed to a three-way stop. All of this area is zoned R2, and so they'll be building homes according to the R2 zoning environments. Again, it's 113 lots, and there are no staff comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, I'll open the floor to the commission. Do we have any questions or comments on this item? No questions, we'll entertain a motion. Move to accept as submitted. Motion to accept as submitted by Mr. Holliday.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Lee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Our next item, item number eight. Final plat, Carruthers Crossing, Phase 1, requested by SEC, Inc., property located off Carruthers Road, tax map 29, parcel 29, PDR Plan Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Burkett Hills Investment Group, LLC. Mr. Logan.
This request is for final plat approval for Phase 1 of Carruthers Crossing, and this property is located on the Davidson County line, as shown on the image. It is 92 acres total, and at build-out, they're proposing 345 homes total. That'd be 345 homes on the 92 acres. And again, this is for Phase 1, and this phase consists of 92 lots, and two of those are commercial lots. So the two commercial lots are the ones that front Carruthers Road. And it does line up. The new road that is being built will line up with McCall Lane, so McCall Lane is existing and just to the, on the east side of Carruthers Road. And I don't believe there's any word, as of yet, on the commercial lots or what might develop there, but as soon as we hear something, we'll let everyone know. Again, this is 92 lots total, and everything in this phase is single-family development, so there's no townhomes, no condos, just single-family with the two commercial lots at the front. And this phase is 23.48 acres, and there's not, have not been any technical comments for some time. They missed a, I believe they missed the meeting at the end of June, on June the 30th, so there were no technical comments then either. The only reason it's back is because they missed that meeting. And that concludes your request.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mayor Cole.
Was the, and I just may be missing it here, but with the utility box, was that access added in there for handicap to be able to access it?
Mail kiosks.
The mail, yes.
So that was, this, it already had approved construction plans, and it had approved preliminary from many, many, many moons ago, before the US Mail Service basically said you have to have kiosk on everything, so that was not part of the original plan. We can, definitely, since they haven't poured it, we can ask them now to retrofit it and just put in a ramp. But on-street parking is planned for this entire development, as we discussed, and they do have handicap ramps at the ends of each of those intersections and where they begin. So if people live within, they can definitely get to it, but depending on how the parking plays out in front of one, that might be a, be a challenge, and you could, of course, we can ask for it just to be amended in the construction plans, and I think SEC would be happy to address that.
And I thought from the workshop that that was the discussion, so.
Right. They'll, they'll have to do it in the construction plans. It wouldn't show up on a final plat regardless.
Okay, thank you.
Since you're coming to the podium, sir, please state your name and address for the record and.
Richard House with SEC, 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro.
Thank you, sir.
We have a mail kiosk planned off the parking lot with the commercial property. It is, it was planned from, from the start because we've been doing mail kiosks around the Rutherford County area for a while, and we had already planned for it. It has been adjusted to accommodate all the units in this development.
Very good.
And it does have handicap parking around it. Wonderful.
Thank you, sir. Greatly appreciated. With that, if there's any other questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before we do.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to be on the record that 92 acres, 345 home sites onto a two-lane road here, and the developer has made no provision to assist the city of Laverne in our road development in that area. But with that, make a motion for approval as presented.
Motion for approval is submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Then we'll move on to our next item. Preliminary plat, Carruthers Crossing, Phase 2, requested by SEC, Inc., property located off Carruthers Road, tax map 29, parcel 29, PDR Plan Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Burkett Hills Investment Group, LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is the Phase 2 preliminary plat for Carruthers Crossing, so this is the same area that we just discussed. And it does touch Davidson County and is 92 acres total. And the homes that you see there to the left are actually in Davidson County, so the blue line you see here is the county line, so this is the last development in Rutherford. Here's some photos of Carruthers. That's a "Welcome to Laverne" sign there, so this is leaving Davidson and coming into Rutherford. And this is McCall on the left, so that's the first street on the left as you come into Rutherford County. And you can see some improvements that have been made there in the last six months to a year, but you can see, in general, it's a very narrow road. And this is the next intersection down, so this would be to the south, and this is Kestrel, the side street, and then I can see another view here of Carruthers. So over, there's a creek here, and you see the guardrails. So beyond the creek and this tree line is where Carruthers is developing, so that's the actual property. And here's a close-up of that, the area shown, the creek. So beyond that is what's developing into homes, and then this is looking back to the north toward Davidson County. And see some signs there for Brookside, and a lot of power lines. So this phase is falling for, let's get the right lot count for this phase. This is proposing 132 lots. So Phase 1 was the 92, and then Phase 2 is 132. So that gets us up in the 220 range after Phase 2. And this phase is 23.7 acres, so a little bit less acreage than the first phase. And all this is single-family development as well, and staff has had no comments for some time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
We're looking at over five units per acre in this portion of the development, and again, I point out, the developer is offering no assistance to the city of Laverne to, to help us with roadway improvements.
Any other questions or comments? Happy to entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
I have a second from Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. On to our next item. Item number 10 is withdrawn, correct, Mr. Logan?
Correct.
So we'll be moving on to item number 11. Site plan, 450 New Sanford Road, requested by Kimley Horn, property located at 450 New Sanford Road, tax map 29, parcel 5.14, I2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Prologis. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This site plan request is for a new building that will contain 184,200 square feet. The use will be distribution and warehouse space, and this is located on New Sanford Road. If you go all the way down New Sanford until you get to the 90-degree curve to the right, if you look straight ahead, that's the area that we're discussing tonight. And they are proposing a new warehouse and distribution center, which is similar uses as the neighboring properties. And you can see there on the zoning map, it is zoned I2, which is the dark blue color. And the entire road is also zoned I2, except just a small part on Industrial Drive. And here's the road as it looks today. There is a gravel shoulder, and there's a bit of a drop-off, maybe eight, eight or 10 feet. It's pretty gradual. There's no sidewalks there today, just a gravel shoulder. And you see, there's another shot, just a lot of vacant land that looks like it was cleared maybe 10 or 15 years ago, maybe longer, but it's, some, some of the brush has grown back, but it was cleared in the past. Looks like a sign there, 30 miles an hour is the speed limit on this road. So the site plan is showing the distribution center, 184,200 square feet, and they are building a new access road. You can see on your plans, and this access road shows close to 40 feet of pavement in width, it's about 30, probably 38 and a half, but close to 40. And the new access driveway will be built near the curve, and then that will be built to serve the new facility when it's built. They also show on the plan, they provided parking for 139 cars, and right now, they've shown 47 spaces for trailer parking. And the driveway aisles are 24 feet wide, so that would be 12-foot-wide traffic lanes, two ways. So that would be 12-foot-wide traffic lanes, two-way direction, each 12 feet wide. This is not in an overlay district, so there's no overlay requirements for this parcel. Some of the comments that staff has had is, you know, the city has the sidewalk requirement. I believe that I had heard that the applicant would like to request fee in lieu. I've not had a discussion with them about it. But I had heard that they might want fee in lieu or might request that. So that's technical item number one, is that sidewalk needs to be addressed. Number two, the city requires the five-foot-wide landscape buffer around parking lots. And I had to flag it because they're showing the five-foot-wide landscape area on the car parking, which is essentially the front of the building. I believe that's going to be the south side of the building. But then in the back, where they've got the 47 spaces for trailers, I don't see any landscaping. And so my first thought was that maybe they were trying to group... Sometimes people want to group their plantings and put them in the front because it's more aesthetically pleasing, and that's where the public's going to be. But they hadn't made that request to me. So I thought they might want to have that discussion with you all. And if you all wanted to move the plantings, you could. The back is... I mean, the rear back there of the building is... I think there's some woods beyond, but, you know, sometimes people move their plantings around. And the only other thing on the landscape plan is there's supposed to be three-foot minimum plantings at the time they go in the ground. And they're showing 24 inches as the height. So that was a foot short than what the city was requiring. So those are the landscape comments. And I don't know if Mr. Leach had any. It doesn't look like it. So that concludes the report.
Thank you, sir. Any comments, Mr. Leach?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I see you've come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Matt Anderson with Kimley Horn, 102 Camden Court North, Hendersonville, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. The three items on here, the sidewalk and the landscape buffering and plantings.
With the landscape buffer, we did see in the code that you wanted to have a five-foot landscape buffer around all parking. We read that as the parking going to the adjacent property for the headlights of the vehicles. So it's shown as a five-foot on the south end where the passenger vehicles will be. And on the north side of the property, there's about 40... I think it's about 40 feet from where the truck parking would be to the property line. And we're intending to keep that undisturbed. Right now, it's fully wooded. All the needed plants are taken over from the slope that's back there. And we're planning to keep that as is.
Okay. And then obviously, the two-foot needs to be three-foot on the plantings?
Yes. And we can make that modification very easily.
Have already or will?
We will. Or when we do the engineering review, we can show those changes.
Normally, we try and not vote with technical items if we can keep from it. Mr. Logan is...
I mean, I don't have an issue. But I know generally, the board does not like to have conditions.
Yes, sir. And also, I think we need to discuss the sidewalk a little bit further in depth because there's not any sidewalks on that road that I'm aware of. But, you know, obviously, it's been there for a number of years. But one of the... One of the things that I've noticed over the years traveling that road is that the employees will come to the end of the driveway to get picked up from work. So we may discuss that at workshop if you're willing to defer this so that we can discuss these couple of items.
Okay. I think that'd be fine if we go ahead and defer.
Thank you very much. We're going to defer this item so that we can discuss these couple of items and work out the sidewalks. Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to the next item. Number 12. Final plat, Laverne Firehouse, requested by Kimley Horn Inc. Property located at 299 Mason Road. Tax map 17, parcel 11.05. I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Property owned by Mason Road Holdings West LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is the plat from the workshop on Mason Road that could be designated as an area for future fire hole for the city of Laverne. Right now, the plat consists of two parcels. And although they submitted the 10 copies that were required, they submitted those at the workshop. They did not submit anything after the workshop. So I have one left. And I'll pass it here if you'd like to look at it. They didn't send me any others. So I don't have any to put in your packets. The total acreage of the three lots currently is 6.96. And the smallest lot after subdivision would be 2.23 acres. And as with most minor plats of this nature, there's no preliminary plat required. And there were no staff comments. Well, they were at the workshop, they've all been addressed. So there's no outstanding comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments in regards to this item? That will entertain a motion.
Motion that we accept.
Motion to accept is submitted. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, item number 13. Final plat consolidation, Lot One, Interchain City South, and Lot Two-C, Interchain City Industrial Park South, requested by Bard Solutions. Property located on Charter Place. Tax map 29, parcel 2.02 and 2.08. C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District. Property owned by Robert T. Stroup and Mary H. Stroup. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a final plat request of the property located at Charter Place. It's actually got more than one address. It's the current location of the Driftwood Inn. And you can see in the imagery that we're talking about, these parcels right here on Charter Place. And that's the zoning map. And it shows them as C2. And then here's the imagery. So this is the Driftwood Inn and associated buildings. You can see the blue roofs that everyone is probably familiar with. And here's a picture of the intersection. So there's a stop sign here for Charter Place. And then offset to the north is this intersection that's got a traffic signal, as you see. So this odd arrangement has been... One of the... One of the goals of this process has been to fix this odd configuration of traffic. And so I know Mr. Leach has been in some meetings to do that. So he might want to speak to that. But this is another photo there of Charter Place. You can see the fire hydrant in the foreground. And then this is the Driftwood property. And this is probably taken two and a half weeks ago, maybe three. So it looks like a fireworks tent was there at that time utilizing the property. And you can see the... Again, the blue roof in the distance there. So there's been a proposal to build a new traffic, new fuel center here with a gas station and possibly some type of carryout restaurant. This plat would make way for that type of development. So they're combining these two lots together. And when the subdivision's complete, the total acreage will be right at five acres, about 4.96. And there's... There's no staff comments in the report. I don't know if Mr. Leach wants to update you on the traffic configuration. I'll let him do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Leach, few would, sir?
Mr. Chairman, you'll note that there's a right-of-way dedication of just over 23,000 square feet. That's just shy... Or, excuse me, just over a half acre. So that will allow us to square up that intersection moving into the future. So basically, having it done now will greatly expedite the process. And I appreciate Bard and Cothran working with us on that, as well as the developer and the meetings that we've had with them.
Very good. So this will allow it all to kind of come together?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you, sir. With that, any questions or comments on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that this developer has made an exceedingly generous offer to the city in order to make an improvement to Laverne roadways. With that, I greatly appreciate it and move for approval.
We have a motion. We have a motion to approve with the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Our next item, item number 14. Planning Commission Resolution 2020-01. Amendment to the Laverne subdivision regulation regarding the sidewalk fee in lieu option, presented by Mr. Graham Coats. Public hearing was held today on July 28, 2020, prior to this meeting. Mr. Logan?
Thank you. So the current fee in the subdivision regulations for the fee in lieu of sidewalk construction is $5.75 per square foot. And that is for sidewalks that are 1,000 linear feet or less. And then once they exceed 1,000 feet in length, it drops to 550 per square foot. So this amendment would increase the sidewalk fee in lieu of construction. It would increase that fee from 550 and 575 to $10 even per square foot.
Very good. Any questions or comments? That will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve is submitted. Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And our last and final item, bonds and letters of credit. Mr. Leach.
Mr. Chairman, you may note that the bond for Brookside Phase Two has been renewed for one more year. The Ridge Phase Three has tendered their bond as of the last meeting. And of course, of note, if you compare the number of lots currently available to the number of complete, we have essentially, within the entirety of the city of Laverne, 33 lots that could be developed at this time and planted subdivisions. That's not counting all the incoming potential things that may or may not be approved. But that's not a whole lot of lots for future development. So just as a note, not a whole lot of lots out there. So won't be a whole lot of building permits until some of these other developments that are kind of winding their way through the process start pulling them.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Leach. I'd like to thank everyone for their time. Meeting adjourned.